Bill, don't be shy.
I think I was waiting for a response to whether the current way that we were that we were participatory in the our capabilities were participatory in the delay of the Lytec funding and the closing of our
Oh, so.
has joined the meeting.
Because again, it's been laid out as the model example of our ability and why we should be doing these RADS.
May I jump in?
Sure.
One thing I do want to draw some, you know, differences as well, like this is not a from scratch Lytec building that we're talking about. We are talking about a Rad of a property where, you know, these are our residents that we're working with, that we, you know, have, you know, close ties to as well. And I also want to draw attention to the fact that what we're proposing here is not a, you know, and what's modeled here is a fee development partner deal in which we'll be able to leverage their Lytec experience as well as in order to supplement our capacity as well. So, and in addition to that, it also manages the housing authorities risk in that this fee development partner will also be in exchange, you know, for fee. They're not doing it for free, but would be putting up financial guarantees through the development process. And so thereby also mitigating some of the risk to the authority.
But the major problem is operation of the asset collection, occupancy, those are the ongoing concerns which would impact the $116,000 in free flowing cash that's razor thin and, you know, we need to manage super efficiently. And what I'm saying is it would appear that you can, the financial structure that got us to where we are in Parkway, it's still a management issue. It's still a management issue.
Has joined the meeting.
And so we keep touting how we're going to, we're going to be the manager of properties, therefore fundamentally nothing is going to change. What I'm trying to point out is that we may not be the manager of these properties if they convert and there's a Lytec lender and we're not collecting enough rent to support the debt, we're not going to be the manager anymore.
Any additional questions?
You know, no one's presenting that downside to this.
But I, this is Alex. Could I just briefly? If you look at the financials under our current audited 2020 financials for Potomac, we're doing poorly now. So I'm not, you know, the alternative is not to keep doing what we're doing because that would be something akin to insanity, I think, because we're losing millions of dollars a year on public housing. So we have to change regardless. And I don't think staying where we are is an alternative that makes sense.
I think I started off that way, Alex. I think I started off staying.
So we agree with that. We agree. Okay, good.
Since we started this conversation three years ago and Rad was the end all be all, look how much, look how much better it's gotten on it.
Look at how much better the Rad got? Yes.
Well, from now we got some things to blend into it. So it's not really, I mean, so I hear you. I'm not
I'll give you full credit for that. I didn't think that would happen and you did. So you're correct.
Are you proposing that we don't do RADS?
I'm proposing that there, we've only ever thought about that. Like this agency's never really thought, as we all like to say, outside of the box, we've never come up with an alternative solution that may not involve, you know, letting HUD off the deed. It may not be all these exposures to our residents. And I've tried to say that a thousand different times.
So
I'm saying here in the public forums.
I'll rephrase my question, Commissioner Silver. Then would you propose that we
And at some point in time, guys, we need to, we need to go to other commissioners. So Commissioner Silver, if you can wrap up your running the questions, that'd be great.
I always take that as the cue that my time is up. So my time is up.
No, no. If you have additional questions, I would prefer it if you ask them.
You know, I have a lot of questions, but there's apparently more. There's other commissioners, so I will defer.
I appreciate your concern. Commissioner Strickland?
Just like you said, you know, from the deputy mayor about Commissioner Van Gaster and our leadership on this, I appreciate the invite. I don't know whose phone is ringing, but I appreciate you trying to get us involved. I appreciate the invite to the meeting that was this past week. And Alex, for you guys working together and trying to find some common ground, we appreciate it. We're just looking forward to, you know, seeing this move. I know this will be this, you know, there's a lot of folks are watching this. And I think that this is going to set the tone on how this board approaches RADS in the future. And so, you know, those are just my comments, but I do, I do like the collaboration that happened and I think there should be more of it.
Thank you.
Nothing, no questions.
Who am I missing? Commissioner Talafaro? Antonio, any questions from you?
No.
Great. So just a couple of questions for me, personal comment. And again, I really appreciate the role that Commissioner Van Gaster has played and shepherded this Rad through, including our leadership on the community engagement. And I think she's setting an example as to how engagement should go. She has been involved personally as a commissioner, so I want to commend her for that. I also wanted, in slightly of Commissioner Slaver's questions on the, on the, on the rent subsidy issue, on the, on the rent issue, you know, I am concerned also about the delta that we'd have to make up in rent revenue for this to be viable. And I think it will, as Bill said, we would need to manage this really tightly, which means we have to be firing on all cylinders. But to Alex or Central, is there a is there a higher HUD subsidy that we would get once we execute the Rad?
The, the Rad rents are a little bit more favorable than current HUD, public housing operating in capital. I don't know the exact percentage. I think maybe John Sarah or Sasha could tell us what the percentage per unit is, but they are better. Particularly better in 2020. In 2020, they actually HUDed, sweetened it a little bit, made it better. And the blend of 40/60, Section 18 and Rad allows us to put 40% project-based voucher rents at 110% of fair market rate into the deal, and that makes the revenue go up even more. And that's based on the percentage of the construction work relative to the hard construction cost of replacement of the building. So we hit a threshold where we benefit from additional revenue. And all of that is new HUD flexibility that's been granted just in the last year. So we're benefiting from all of that.
So Alex, you just answered my next question. So my, my last question is, is on management post-construction. And again, this DCHA on the leadership of Mr. Garrett has been tending towards self-management. And until my question is sort of what management infrastructure do we currently have in place or would we would have to put in place to make sure that we're managing these properties better?
I think it's fairness. Somebody who has the property management expertise should probably take that question.
Prefer to Larry as well, but the one thing I would, I would say, Mr. Chair, is that we also intend to work with not only this board, but the incoming executive director and any permanent executive director to ensure that we're aligned with their vision for how we would move forward as well. I just wanted to add that.
Great. Larry, do you want to add anything on this?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, yeah.
Absolutely. So for the past two years, we have been building the capacity within PMO to ensure that we can manage tax credit properties. So I believe that the team that we have in place from the area managers on down to the managers have the relative experience to be able to manage the sites appropriately. And just to touch on Parkway overlook, Parkway overlook just a little bit, there was multiple issues before we took over the property. When we took over the property, we were able to help stabilize the property and work with the program Stay DC to make sure that we are getting to the point of stabilization. So I do believe that my team that we have in place have the capacity and the ability to do the job.
And is your team provided with training and audit development to ensure that they're, you know, keeping up to date with the standards and requirement to perform their job at optimal level?
Yes.
Great. So Bill, I see you have another comment?
Yeah, I had, when we had this big discussion last time around with a judiciary, I asked Director Garrett, I just really want to focus on this notion that we're paying ourselves this rent. This is the tenant portion of the rent that we're talking about. That's the 20%, the delta that you're talking about. And so I just want to make sure that that's, 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 that's what we understand that we're talking about. So I asked Mr. Garrett last time around on judiciary, we have that flexibility here. We have people that are going into arrears, we put them on payment plans, we have all these things. We don't have that flexibility on these Rad structures because they're standalone entities and they need all the revenue. They need 95% of revenue to support the project. So what he said was, well, we're going to create a contingency fund, not dissimilar to the capital replacement. That is, that's not possible, is it?
Sasha, you want to respond to that?
I think we'd need to, I mean, I'm happy to go back to Director Garrett to understand.
No, no, Sasha is about to answer.
No, I think, I think, is he talking about the fund that would have the developer fee going to? Is that what you were referring to?
I'm talking about something different, which is
Okay, yeah. So I'm sorry.
Currently, we, you know, we let folks go into arrears, they put, get into payment plans because money's fungible throughout the portfolio. So, you know, you apply this $1.6 million loss to Potomac Gardens, but it might be made up somewhere else because we have 50 different properties. That's not the case on these properties anymore. They're going to be, they're going to be streamlined. They're going to be one P and L. So the response was we would create some sort of contingency fund to pay the delinquent rent so there wouldn't be any eviction.
And I believe that is something that we can look at and making sure that we carry an extra hefty reserve in some of these as we move forward. That's, that's one item that we can look at as we're modeling these properties as we move forward.
Where would you get the reserve from? You're running razor thin already.
We might have to look at how we're performing a lot of these, these overall redevelopments. We're putting extra services here and there and we may have to adjust the scope just so that we can make sure that we satisfy and have some additional reserve.
All right, thanks.
A lot of questions. So I'm done. Thanks. I won't be able to support it because I'm afraid of the capabilities.
All right. So let's, at this time, I'm going to entertain motion to approve Resolution 2108, which would authorize the submission of Rad program application to HUD for Potomac Gardens Senior and the 700 family mid-rise apartments. Do you have a motion?
I move that we accept the motion.
Is there a second?
I want to reflect that the advocate community who's been in Potomac Gardens, who understand our deplorable condition, at no time have encouraged not near one of my constituents anywhere in eight wards to take their money and put it in landlord and tenant court until the housing authority correct their maintenance. However, they do a lot of red flags and I want to go and represent with Jim Khan, Edgar Khan White, went down here with landlord and tenant lawyers teaching us to take housing to court. And when you have an advocacy group who may have already told their leader to vote the way you vote, however, you have Commissioner Council who is in a hope six, that is, that his strike hope six, because when develop it. Okay, you have N Street Village, when develop it. I support when whether or not they agree with me or my enemies. One thing I like about when is look at who supports when and look at the product, the product that produced. And I'm asking the rest of you to go on to Commissioner Slaver and back on to you again. You have Karen Saddleson, Starred Taurus. He ain't saying nothing about them. He ain't saying nothing about Council who sits on this board in a stable condition. So please bill some commissioners.
We really have to, Commissioner, we do have to move forward with the vote. We appreciate your comments and we appreciate you moving it. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Alethea, could we do a roll call vote?
Sure. Thank you. Commissioner Strickland? Commissioner Strickland, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I see a thumbs up. I need to
You can't hear me?
Yes, I hear you now. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz-Gow?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Talafaro? Commissioner Talafaro, are you there? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Van Gaster?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Basty Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slaver?
Present. That's for you, Van.
I'm sorry.
Inside, inside comment.
Okay. Commissioner Fauchekio?
An enthusiastic yes.
Thank you. Chairman Albert?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair, you have nine yes, one present vote. The resolution is approved.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you again, Commissioner Van Gaster, for your leadership on this. Now we'll turn to our public comments.
Leaving, I'm getting ready to cover and then I have to praise.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. So first up is Sean, Ms. Hi. Ms. Hi, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you as always for the opportunity to speak to the board today. I want to go ahead and bullet point my testimony and get right to my scripture. There should be a minimum of two resident council presidents on the search committee for the next DCHA executive director. Park Morton is always mentioned in many meetings without me being present at any of those meetings. Why is that? Let's make it clear that in the future I will be present at all meetings that have any dealings pertaining to, about, or concerning Park Morton. That goes without saying for all resident council presidents and their elected officials for their properties. There shall be no excuses as to why there is no contact with us when our properties, our families, our livelihoods, and the futures of our communities are at stake. No Park Morton resident shall be given any information without giving it to me and my board members first as I am still a resident as well as the president, period. Any and all correspondences shall be sent to parkmortonresidentcouncil@gmail.com. DCHA will not house the resident council and community room in the same building as the property management office as the property manager, Ms. Betty Diallo, has exacerbated my mental health disabilities and I will not be placed in a position to be triggered every day. I will remain safely housed in 615 where I feel safe and can comfortably deliver services to my residents when they make an appointment. As resident council president, I fought for the locks on my buildings and finally received keys for them. Thank you. Now, when will I receive keys for the announcement boxes that I also fought for that I only received one key for which is inside of the resident council building only? Again, HOU and TCB had keys to all the announcement boxes as well as keys to the buildings. Why can't I have all of the keys to announcement boxes as well as keys to the buildings like I have now received keys to the building? So why can't I? Why am I still hanging up flyers on the walls? When will Park Morton know for sure what is going to happen with his property? What happened to the micro brands for all of the businesses that attended the virtual vendor expo in April? When will I receive information, the information list for my residents? Information about the resident council elections keep floating around with no way for the residents to apply for a position to run for elections. How do you plan to host the elections and why do and how, excuse me, and why do properties slated for redevelopment have to change leadership during such an important stage? Lastly, why aren't our councils trained to be able to issue parking tickets on our properties to assist with, one, revenue for our resident councils, two, helping with to alleviate illegal parking issues we have at our, at some of our properties, and three, to assist with deterring the exacerbated illegal ticketing DCHA PD does to our residents? We know our residents and their vehicles, their children's vehicles if their children are young adult dropped. The presidents, vice presidents, and sergeant-at-arms should be officially deputized by someone to be able to issue finable parking tickets for our properties. We are tired of the foolishness and it needs to stop. A few of those 250, 500 and 1K tickets will shut that down quick, fast, and in a hurry. Proverbs 1:5, "Let the wise hear and increase in learning, and the one who understands obtain." I'm Shante High, President of the Council at Park Morton. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Hi. Paulit Matthews? All right, let's continue to go down the line. Charlene McFadden? Is Detrice Belt available?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yep, just two questions. Let's see. I want to know what is the timeline to have all replacement public housing units done so me and my family can return to Berry Farm? And question number two is if developers can move forward without a development agreement because of zoning change, what written guarantee of return do I have? So I'm just speaking on Berry Farms. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Central, are you available to respond right now?
We'll note down the questions and make sure to respond in writing. But I just want to make sure we're collecting them correctly. The question was regarding the right to return was the latter part and the first question was I'm sorry, can you just repeat what the first part of the question was?
Miss Bell, can you read mine? Yes, what is the timeline? Yep.
I'll make sure Andre reaches out directly as well as we'll, and we'll respond in writing with response to those questions.
Okay, so my email is changed. I don't know for all you all on here is detricebelt@gmail.com.
Alethea, you have that noted? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Peggy Disro? So you have to press star six to unmute if you're muted. Peggy Disro? Carlist Laurie? Okay, I'm going to come back up. Rosa Burbidge? She, I think we will be having a technical issue. Moving along, Heather Day?
Hello, can you hear me?
Is this Ms. Day?
Yes, this is Ms. Day.
Okay, go ahead. Thanks, Ms. Day.
Okay. I have a few things I need to follow up on. Back in March, I sent a letter to DHA, DCHA about my rent abatement. I was requesting rent abatement due to all of the housing code violations I dealt with at my Elvers Road property from road infestations to hot water issues to electrical issues. That letter also included requests for all work tickets and a detailed ledger from Wells Fargo to show my escrow payments and also a current ledger to show my correct balance, which honestly should be zeroed out at this point. That was supposed to be a follow-up by Mr. Garrett on the call last month. You know, he stated that I mentioned counsel and it was legal, so no one ever reached out to me. I sent a new letter on May, it was May 10, to Mr. Mays, updating that information, removing counsel information. He sent the email back stating that he received it. I asked that someone reach out to me by May 25th to give me an update and there still has not been an update. So I wanted to find out what's going on as far as that response that that you guys had until the 28th to respond to. Also, I went into my Rent Cafe account and I noticed that more money has been added to my account each month, starting with September 2016, when I first entered the ABLE program that says SHB, which I assume it should have been because it shows that money was added to the different amounts that I was charged for. If someone didn't do their job, I feel as though I shouldn't be responsible and that you guys should not be able to backdate all the way back to 2016 for something that someone didn't do. It feels like retaliation. Some of my other issues are, as far as the program itself, I'm receiving letters saying that it ends on this date and it's not correct. I got a corrected date. They said, okay, as far as your ABLE program, if you want to try to get an extension, send a letter. I sent a letter, still no information. Where I'm at, it's horrible here. I mean, my, I went to this in my old property. Nothing has been done to my unit. My fire was December 2020. There's still the tart from the house. All the stuff is still in the window. Nothing has been done to that unit. I'm not understanding what the issue was with me having time to get my items out of the unit during, after the fire and you guys changed the locks into six months later and nothing has been done to the property. So I kind of feel like you guys are waiting for the program to end so that I don't have to return to that unit. Over here, we have an issue because it's like the zombie apocalypse because everyone is getting high on whatever they want to get high on in the alley and my kids are afraid to go outside, including my three-year-old grandchild because they're out there high and talking and flipping and fighting and rolling and yelling. And, and then, you know, the gun violence has picked up in this neighborhood. My question is, what is the plan for my family? Are we supposed to be stuck here until I decide to move out? I got into the ABLE program when I left Potomac Gardens to better myself, to better my family and to be a homeowner. You guys are making that impossible. Okay? I don't understand what the plan is for my family. This is not how we live. This is not how I want to raise my children. And I feel like we're just stuck. Every single month, I'm on these calls from September up to now. There's no resolution. We'll get back. We'll reach out. Nobody does nothing. Like this is beyond frustrating. Like I need some answers. If we need to move, if you guys need to give us a voucher, if there's not another place for my family size, I have a senior in my home. I have a child with a baby in my home. If my family needs to be broken down so that everybody is accommodated to get the heck away from here, that's fine. The issue is nothing is being done and I feel like we're being stuck here on this property.
So Ms. Day, can I ask a quick question? Who's your primary point of contact in DCHA on these, on these issues?
I spoke to every single one of them. Everybody, all the way up the chain of command. I've talked, I've talked to Samardra Watson. I've talked to Brandy, I can't think of her, Brandy Lynch. I've spoke to Larry Williams. I spoke to Mr. Mays. I've spoken to Tyrone Garrett. I've spoken to everybody. I've talked to, I don't know who else. I've even spoke to the councilwoman at large. I spoke to everyone. No one is doing anything. I don't know who else to talk to.
Alright, so I think you're doing the right thing and and talking to the board. Uh so Larry and Greg, um I really would appreciate if uh so if if you can send Larry, Larry and Greg, do you have um Miss Day's contact info?
I prefer email. I need stuff in writing.
Yeah, I do have. I I wanted them to sit with you virtually um within the next week uh to identify all the issues and work systematically uh to move them out of the way to the best of their ability and ask them to report uh back to the board uh within thirty days as to what progress they have made.
Could I ask, could I add one thing to that, Neil? Um is there a way we can get some better understanding about how we, how it got to be that Miss Day had to actually come to the board to testify?
I know.
And sort of do a backtrack on who was communicated, when they were communicated, who dropped the ball, if a ball was dropped. I'm not suggesting. I'm not implying anything at the moment. It's just that maybe a uh like a sort of forensic background check on how we got here would be helpful.
I I I agree. And um so Larry, can you do that as part of your response? Mr. Williams?
Absolutely.
Again, and again, I'm not, I don't want to imply that I know what went wrong. I just, it'd just be helpful if we could find out if anything needs to go wrong.
Would do.
I totally agree with you. Thanks so much, Miss Day.
Thank you.
Uh Marlena Charles.
Hello. Hi, I'm here. This is Marlena Charles. Thank you for having me. Thank you. Um from the last time I spoke with you, I did speak to the management at DC Housing Authority and they're they're working with me um and trying to find somewhere to go, but you guys have to realize it's the policy that's in the way of me and my daughter. Um the 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 public safety and also that is hazardous. This is my second property that I was moved at because I couldn't breathe because I almost died. Um so I can't go to the senior builders because I'm at childbirth childbirth stages and my daughter is, so they won't put us there. So it's like, what, you know, what can they do, wha- wha- what 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 can they do for us? And then number two, um HR has not paid me since twenty, they haven't paid me my check. They're not listening to anyone. They have DC wages even going to their lawyer. No, they're not listening to anyone. They owe me a paycheck. I paid taxes on it. They are refusing to give it to me because they said, um because it's a DC government, um it's a it's ran by DC government and because they know that it's harder to s- to sue and collect so they're just using that card now to pay me. I don't understand wh- what is the personal um anger in HR about? I don't understand what it is. When I was working, I did a awesome job. I did an awesome job. So I just, I have two issues. Uh I need to be moved because I can't breathe and, you know, this pedophile was after my daughter tried to break through the door four times to get to my daughter and trying to kill me and we're still here. And then a- and I can't breathe. When you can't breathe, you can't breathe. Um and the management team is stepping up to help me. They are, but um we, the policies are in our way.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Um and I I am not sure about the specific policies, but I can tell you generally policies get in the way on on the on the on the on the safety issue. Again, I know Chief Moffin is is on uh the call today. I want to ask him to connect with you uh directly. I'm not clear on the back pay issue, but I don't want you to air that out uh today. But I'm going to ask our general counsel, uh Greg Mays, who is probably disappointed that he joined the meeting because he's getting assignments uh to uh work with you to address uh the issue and try to find a resolution as quickly as possible. So um so please leave your contact info uh so that they can be in touch with you. And again, as I asked you the last uh a person to testify, if you guys can report back to the board within thirty days, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, please, please leave your contact information so that we could circle back.
Um give a pen and paper, C H I L D S underscore two thousand four at netzero dot com. That's my email address.
And what's your name?
Marlena Charles.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Charles.
Bye bye.
Uh Linda Brown.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Linda Brown and I have a question actually about the elections coming up for resident council. I want to know um when are they going to be held? And um what's the timeline for um applications to be in? So those bios of the people who are running will be in those magazines? Or um how are we going to run the elections due to COVID? And so if it's not in person, how are we going to do this and what's the timeline for doing it?
Uh all very good and important questions. I'm not sure we have all the answers at this point in time. But uh Greg, um could you, are you the person to share sort of a high level overview of what the thinking is on the elections?
I think that, you know, we sent out a memo regarding elections, but I think Larry Williams and his ORS staff would probably be more competent to talk about the elections. Sure.
Go ahead, Larry.
Um so commissioners, you do have a memo um regarding the other options um that was uploaded uploaded to Diligent this morning that I received from the third-party monitor. Um we received it from them today, so we uploaded it to you all today. Um however, um what the ask was from Commissioner Strickland was to look at if we were to do some type of hybrid, how would it impact the cost or how would it impact the scope of work? So the recommendation there is to proceed with an in-person election following all of the safety um protocols um due to COVID. So that information is there. Um once I receive something back, we'll proceed the timeline. Um we're looking to have the elections in September.
Great.
So, so are we going to?
Does that answer your question?
Yes, so are they're going to be a forum that is going to be held on these properties for these resident councils? So you know who is running and what they're going to bring to the table? Are we going to be able to do that kind of uh information? Because this is important that we do information shared.
Absolutely. That is in the plan.
Okay, so Larry, can you uh?
I'm sorry, will we have dates on this? So it isn't a last minute. Um we're not close to September. So how soon are we going to be able to get this where the actual elections happen?
So one, once it's approved, you will start to see information within the next thirty days. Um and so it's a relatively quick turnaround based on what the third-party monitor has suggested.
So Larry, when would you be able to make uh more information public?
Um once, uh so so once you all have viewed what the recommendation was and if you're okay with us proceeding, I just need a nod for us to proceed. And the information will start to go out within the next thirty days.
So you say that. So I'm sorry, you said the next thirty days?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um Chiri Phelps. Let's move on to Deborah Frazier. I know Ms. Frazier's on.
Greetings, everyone. First.
Greetings, Deborah.
Please note that one of the reasons perhaps that you're losing residents to comment is that commissioners and an hour or two debating the resolutions as though they have never seen them before. And when it comes to questions from the public, there's little or no time for that. That is not transparency and that is not respectful residence who are holding on the phone three and four hours when they have children or doctor's appointments and things to do. That is disrespectful. Anyone look at you maybe talking among yourselves when you're not getting a public phone with them. Second and most importantly, is one question. Is there a transition plan for our agency? Given that there's going to be an interim director and who knows, a mess, director search took you on nine months. Is there a transition, is a transition plan planned? I'll wait.
So uh do you want to just get through your questions and then then I can answer?
Okay, that's what I want. So so it all revolves around a transition plan. One, there are there are things in place that we discussed today. The redevelopment efforts, the new architects and contractors for modernization, the resident council meetings. There are things that this agency uh is beholden to its residents to do. In this time of uncertainty, how do we know that any of these things will get done? That anyone is paying concerning attention to how our lives go forward regardless of the leadership you're in transition with? So how will you make the transition in this period? How will residents keep involved? How would development plans go on? Park Morton, Tyler House, Green Leaf, how will this happen and what's the, what's the plan? One, two, three, four, we would do this, we won't do that, we would do this. Also, who is representing the agency and defending humans like A and C? Do you like we see council budget meetings coming up? Where is the agency representation in Biden Park? What happens to our residents? What happens to the founder hovers? What happens to seniors? What happens to our brothers and sisters in the capital? Why you all decide what you're going to do with the leadership with the agency? Clear or not?
Yes, Deborah, you can, you can't be any clearer. So let me start by saying, you know, life goes on uh in DCHA. Uh it's not the first time we've had a change in administration and I suspect it's not going to be the last time we have a cha- a change in administration. But what we do have is a a whole lot of co- very competent employees in DCHA uh that will continue to do the work that their tasks are doing to do and and are paid to do. So whatever is development or whatever is community engagement, you name it, uh that should not skip a beat. But in the interim, we've appointed uh in the meanwhile, we've, we have appointed an interim director who starts on the twenty first. Uh just, so there's just a weekend uh lapse between the outgoing director and an interim uh director. This board has put, has put together a search uh committee. Uh the search committee met today to outline a a a process uh for selecting uh the new executive director which we are beginning uh in earnest, which will involve hiring a search firm to go, you know, scour the nation to find the best candidates that we can interview. Um a subcommittee of ours is also working on uh, you know, the best position description that we can share uh with uh the search firm and we will continue to be meeting on a regular uh basis uh until we find a director. And so um I, you know, we we have uh really good uh management leadership at DCHA for the most part. And so I, we shouldn't, uh you know, you shouldn't, we shouldn't miss a beat. If however, things are not moving, Ms. Frazier, I know you're not shy in reaching out to any of us on the board uh and and we will continue to help push things along. So I hope I answered your question.
Yes, two things to emphasize. One, I love Chairman, how you talked about the wonderful people you have in place. You have very great and excellent um staff members in all of the silos who are doing wonderful work for our residents. We all don't get to be on the board, nor do we care. Who we care, who's taking care of us at resident council, OGT, office of planning? And that group is doing well and also in the in the director's office, so signing up to everything. Please ensure to the extent that you can, board, maintain the organizational um credibility and the experience of those ten, twenty, fifteen-year residents who are working there. And please, if you did not do this with the last search committee, please make it your concerted business to have residents, residents, constituents, residents, you know them, on the search for me. That would go, go, because we're the ones who are on the back end of the search. You're on target. We, thank you so much for your consideration in these.
Thank you so much, Deborah. Appreciate it. Um so let's go back up the list uh to Rosa Burbidge.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. Um my name is Rosa Burbidge and currently I'm a resident of Lincoln Road Apartments. And today I'm going to give testimony regarding Melville transformation, infrastructure, auto tech, engineering, resolution. I heard all of that today, but the most precious assets afforded to DCHA are the residents. We are your focus, your purpose, vision, and mission. We are not bothering tools. So don't devalue our worth based upon oversight. Transparency, accountability, and truth and disclosure are the things I would like to address. There has been continuous changes regarding the Melville transformation. Unfortunately, what has not changed is the disregard, the negligence, and the impact of this on the residents. You say no residents displacement, no loss of housing benefits, the guaranteed right to return and no rescreening. This sounds wonderful. However, it's fiction and not fact. And let me tell you why. First of all, residents will not have the option to return, some of them, because residents have been improperly housed for decades. One example, here at Lincoln Road, you have six one bedrooms and thirteen two bedrooms. Take for instance, once we have been properly housed, you have ten residents that qualify for the one bedroom. What happens with the other four? How do you make that distinguish? Do you say the people who are properly housing come back? Or do you say the people who because of an oversight or niche management which has been decades in the wrong size unit, they get the first um option to come back? So do not say we are guaranteed the right. For me, put it in writing. Secondly, residents do not pay utilities. Will this remain the same? Or will this hardship and burden be passed on to residents? Uh has any notification of bus change been made aware to the residents? So families will have the opportunity to discover resources, budgeting, and becoming a breath of energy efficient options? We've had meetings time and time again and it pains me to say that the staff, the management staff, who was once for-profit, now working in a not-for-profit organization needs to be debriefed and have sensitivity training. Continuously, when a um a resident asks a question, being told, contact me, I will speak in private. Will you do these at one time, what was annual recertification? Does not it say how many members are in the household? Does not it say how many units are there? So we're one, several people here. One of their problems is the relocation. Have you thought to send them some notification to let them know that you are improperly housed? Therefore, we're going to give you time now, if you start now, not once you get the contract or which would be convenient for everyone else, letting them know that they have to take their life's belongings, their possessions and they're going to have to downsize. I asked this question at the alleged meeting on the twenty fifth, which was very laughable and we were told ninety days. Didn't that the management office have five, ten, fifteen, twenty-plus years to realize that these residents was properly housed? How then do you expect for people to change their life within a ninety-day period? My next concern, what about the residents who are protected under the ADA Act? Who have animals, people who have plants? Where are you going to relocate it? Her defines homelessness as individuals or families who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residency. Meaning they are living in a public or privately operated shelter. We were told about the possibilities of being moved to hotels. Is the relocation, relocation team? team referring us to those big, big infested hotels that are, well, they're actually motels that are squatted along New York Avenue? What type of environment will be in? Will we be able to cook our meals? Will we be able to use our computers? What about those who have restricted diets and health issues? And again, management says, you need to contact us. Uh, once we have all of this, um, where you're going to go, well, well, once the contracts are signed, then we'll let you know. How do you think in clear conscience that you can come in in 90 days after a person has lived somewhere 30 plus years and just move them out to where? Every time I ask the question, where are we going? They have no idea. I was appalled. I was actually offended.
Ms. Burbidge, you have 15 seconds left.
All right. Those are the things that I want to address. Please, I ask everyone today, put the residents first. Stop telling us what you need to make changes to become moderate, and tell us how you're going to make us have a better way of life and continue to have our residency. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Burbidge. I appreciate your comments. Uh, next?
Can I get one quick thing in there?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Mays, one of the things that we just heard from the last speakers is this right to return, continual right to return question. Um, last month, um, the advocates put forth a resolution to finally address this situation. That was about 30 days ago. Um, do you have any update on where that stands at the moment?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we were discussing the draft that we have been circulating internally, and we should be able to, to submit that for board's consideration, um, very shortly.
So, you might understand that you didn't go back and forth with the advocates. You've spent 30 days looking at the draft internally?
I, I mean, the, the, the resolution being a public forum, and they'll be back and forth, and that's, you know, that, that, that possibility does exist. But as far as the board's resolution, the way the process is, is that the resolution they put up for the board is publicly debated, um, the board considers, considers it, et cetera.
Okay, so you've spent 30 days reviewing that, and when do you think we can get it as a board?
Oh, well, I need to check with, uh, our, our people. I think we can have it by in the next race or so.
So, six weeks to review the resolution?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that it takes time for us to make sure that we include everything that needs to be included in a resolution so that we, when we do the deliverable, is something that reflects where we are as an agency.
I guess what I'm saying is you've had four weeks, you're now asking for two weeks, so that's six weeks. So is there any way we can get it faster?
Uh, it's a draft now, it's still being revised. I don't want to, I want to give you a finished product as far as we're concerned. But we'll, we'll try to do it as fast as we, we can.
It's an important issue. It's been five years in the making, so it would be great if we could accelerate it. Thank you.
Chair, Chairman Albert, this, this is Alex. I'd like to, um, take two of the three questions that, um, Ms. Burbidge posed and provide some answers to those. First of all, um, we will not be charging separate utilities with Melville when it converts in Rad. It's the same, as we've been saying for Judiciary House and Potomac, we're going to keep the utilities as a, uh, property paid, um, portion of the rent. It will be the same as in under public housing. So she need not worry about additional utility charges. Um, related to the relocation, all I can say is that we are looking at multiple options. There are not a lot of vacancies at Melville, at the five properties currently. And so we are looking at multiple options. I agree, and as do all of the people at, at O C P, um, in my department, that putting someone in a hotel for 45 days or 50 days is not really a very acceptable option. And we've been looking at other options, including, um, apartments for long-term stay. Um, we don't have an answer for that yet. And once we have an answer, we'll come back to the board and provide that, um, that final determination of how we're going to do the relocation.
Okay, thank, thank you so much, Alex.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Albert?
Yes?
This is Paula Matthews, and at the end, if I could speak, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to go back up to this. Uh, Patricia Bishop?
Good afternoon, everyone. I've called it, I'm speaking on the fact that I brought it to the attention of the manager, Ms. Javel, last month about these chemicals that the contractors are using. Them chemicals are so strong, a person who doesn't have a respiratory problem in the buildings has suffered. With children having headaches, it is so strong, it would knock a person out. It comes through a mass.
Ms. Bishop, these chemicals they're using to clean the buildings?
They're in the empty apartments doing work, and whatever that chemical is, it's stronger than a turpentine mixed with Scooby Doo, boat, gas, and all those type of smells. Okay? I suffer with asthma real bad. Thank God I have my own nebulizer machine, which all weekend I had to suffer and get on the nebulizer machine, not every six hours, but every three hours, because there's no ventilation in this building. So it comes through the vent into everybody's apartment through the cracks of the doors, took over this fourth floor hallway. I reached out to Ms. Javel, she returned a call, Ms. Vody returned a call. I reached out to Rhonda Haverton, she sent email. Nobody came to see this. But like I said, before this incident, it happened before last month. Ms. Javel spoke to them about it, and there was also talk to someone at Housing about it, to get these fans in here so that these places can be properly ventilated. When she returned the call to me yesterday, the company told her that they would stop using that and switch to another chemical, and they would come with the ventilation fans. Then Ms. Gloria, that delivers the lunches to outdoors, yesterday the hall was so dusty because 409 they was working in, and whatever they did accumulated the dust and made it look like a white cloud throughout the fourth floor hall. Y'all have got to have these people stocked. If they don't have the necessary supplies that they need for ventilation fans on day one with their equipment, if they are qualified and being paid for it, they must consider us, the tenants, as stakeholders to provide us a better air quality to, to breathe. My second statement is these blue trash cans out here, I keep getting phone calls about where they located and the rats. Now, I holler out the window Sunday to tell a grown man that, no, he can't go behind a trash can in those blue trash cans to urinate. I hollered out the window all last summer at these men that don't live on this property about it. Now, y'all got a state of our calendar, but y'all can't see and get tag numbers of these men that uses this at their public bathroom, right outside our window, and as this heat comes up, we smell that in our apartments? Come on, housing, all the way around, y'all got to do better for your tenants. And that's on truth, and may God bless me.
Ms. Bishop, let me just ask, um, Alex Morris to, uh, respond a little bit, uh, to your concern. Alex?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, my name is Alex Morris. I'm the chief of planning, design, and construction. Um, we are currently working on a series of vacant units at the Garfield, excuse me, the Greenleaf Family Building. And, uh, that work is being contracted with my, my staff in my department. Um, it came, this came to my attention yesterday that there was a, a smell, and I immediately reached out to my staff and I asked them to go find out what's going on. And it was reported back to me that what you're smelling is an oil-based primer that they're using on some of the walls. Some of the walls were dirty and they, they wanted to use a high, a very, you know, high-strength primer. We've told them to not do that. Um, we pointed out that the can right up, that, that they're using, right on it, it says, provide adequate ventilation. And we've told them not to use that primer again unless they provide the adequate ventilation that's required, and they've agreed. So that should not happen again.
That's what you're saying, but they have those cans still stored in these units. They have been in this building for how long? With using this, making that sick over and over again. What time do you realize what your staff and your employees have done to us as the tenants, while they was using it before you decided, or whoever decided to no longer use it, and they shouldn't have been using it without a ventilation fan? Sir, have a good day.
Thank you. Um, you are correct, and we will make sure that they do not use it again, and we will take action if they do.
And get it out of the building, because having it in the apartment storing it, it's not healthy for us to continue to inhale it while it's escaping through the vents that's connected to everybody's bathroom. Top or not, it's still a hazard to our health.
Yes. As soon as I'm off the phone, I will talk to my director of construction and ask him to investigate if they've still stored material like that in the building, and if so, we'll ask them to remove it.
Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Bishop and Alex. Uh, next is Deana Walker. Oh, and I, I know Ms. Walker sent her, um, testimony and she had to leave. Um, Paula Matthews?
Hello, everybody. How y'all going? Um, I've been sitting here nysten to everybody, and everyone that has spoken as a resident, um, I'm 100% with you guys, because a lot of times, things are done and they don't find out till the last minute, but we wind up suffering behind it. The reason why I'm actually on the phone today is to figure out, um, when will maintenance work start? I know that before Corona, I had some, um, orders that were already in, and I know that there's probably been a backlog because a lot of people have had, um, things to happen in their unit, and because they're not in emergency classified by the policy and procedures of the D C Housing Authority, they hadn't been tampered with at all, but yet they were asking us whether we had Corona or whatever, as if they were coming. So my question today is, when will they get back to work? When will they actually start coming into units? Will they give you enough notice that they are coming? That's one of my questions, and can someone answer that?
Alex, can you answer that?
No. Um, Chairman Albert, I, I can answer it. Uh, Ms. Matthews, uh, we have resumed doing routine work orders, so if you have any outstanding, I will, um, pull up in the system and make sure that someone gets them addressed and give you adequate notice.
Okay, because I saw Mr. Paul today, and I asked that question, and he said it hadn't been lifted yet. So I told him I would bring it up in his meeting, so therefore he didn't get the memo.
No, it's been lifted, and I will make sure that we get someone to your unit to address your, your concerns.
Okay, um, also, Mr. Williams, you know of the HVAC situation that I had from day one, and you aware of the fact, and someone was supposed to have been coming out. As it stands right now, when I checked on yesterday, they didn't even have the order number. I have it somewhere, so I'm going to look for it myself. What she did was put in some type of order number, and she said when they get to me that I can explain to them what I want done. And then at the same time, when they came out, and I think the right term is, uh, saw, I don't know, it's the grass that they brought one time to my unit when I first moved here, but it was dead, and I had to call y'all to tell y'all to remove it because it, it made no sense. When they was taking it off the truck, it was falling apart, and I'd asked that it be done, but it hadn't been. So I put that order in as well. She said that she didn't see it, so she put it in as cut the grass because it's not in your system that way. So they would have to come here first to find out what it is that I want done to be able to do the work. So that's another one of my problems. And then there's the, um, Berry Farm situation. With Berry Farms, we always ask the question of what's going on. Uh, everybody always asks about when can we return? But I noticed that in the plan, they're doing the senior building first, and they should be done, I think they said 2024, I'm not sure. But my concern is why they won't continue to like build more than just that senior building. But if they're building houses on that same side going down the road on both sides, why isn't it that that cannot be done as of yet, if they have the money to do this? And my other concern is that there'd be a lot of people having different meetings, also having meetings with Roger in reference to, um, Berry Farms. But yet the residents of Berry Farms and the Berry Farms Tenant and Allies Association can never seem to get a meeting where as though it's Roger, the D C Housing Authority, um, and the board all in one room to get clarification of what's going on. Each time we come to these meetings, we get a standoff view of things, or our questions or concerns are not answered. It's just rolled off to the next month, and then the next month, they don't even address them. So that's a few of my concerns. I ain't going to take up everybody's time, but I got more.
Thank you so much. Alex, um, do you want to respond to the Berry Farm, uh, component of her questions?
Um, I, I'm not, I'm not an expert on Berry Farm. I don't work on that project.
I think you're an expert on everything.
Yeah, Andre from O C P's on the line.
But Andre, Andre Gould can take that. Please, Andre, go ahead.
Yeah, um, we've been having monthly meetings, um, with, uh, Berry Farm residents, and, uh, Ms. Matthews has actually been in those meetings and has, has spoke very eloquently about some of her concerns. Um, so we'll continue to have those, um, meetings and, and try to continue to address, uh, the concerns she raised.
And how, how frequently are you having those meetings?
They're, they're monthly.
They're monthly.
Can you talk, can you talk about why they will not be building homes, and their concern is actually the senior building, and they can't continue with building homes, so people can start returning other than the seniors that's going to move into that building?
Yeah, yeah, the senior building is the, the first, uh, building that's being planned, and, and we hope to go to a financial closing for that building before the end of the year. Um, unfortunately, the, the larger, uh, townhomes that you're referring to are, are planned as part of the first phase, but it, it's planned in a, um, uh, later in the timeline. Um, so we're, we're attacking it one, um, component at a time, um, and, and hope to get to the townhouses, uh, within the foreseeable fut- future, as we plan and finance each, each phase and component.
Andre, let me ask, uh, Deputy Mayor, if I'll take here to chime in.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Also, I, I highlight that, uh, in the mayor's budget proposal, there, uh, is $22 million for, uh, Berry Farm, split over two years, uh, in order to, for us to build out the infrastructures. Uh, so Andre, that is a part of the budget proposal too, uh, which would help us advance future, uh, sites on, uh, Berry Farm. And then the other item that's in the mayor's budget, which is something new, is actually a, a footbridge or, uh, foot or bicycle bridge, uh, over, um, the, uh, parkway there, so that, uh, residents will be able to, when they return to Berry Farm, will be able to access the metro, uh, through a new, brand-new footbridge. Um, and so those are two things in the mayor's budget that I just wanted to highlight, uh, to help us advance Berry Farm. Um, so Andre, I don't know if that infrastructure investment, how you talked about how that helps us, uh, get to building housing.
Excuse me, so they're incorporating footbridges and not, um, trying to figure out bringing back the homes quickly, because you know, the process of putting these homes up takes a minute, and a lot of us might be dead or whatever before the plan actually executed itself to be a reality. And we've already been in a wait stage for a minute, so I'm still concerned.
I share that concern, but Andre, you don't mind talking about, about infrastructure that helps us bring the homes?
So the 22 million that the deputy mayor just spoke about will help advance the infrastructure, um, to complete, um, those homes that you're referring to, those, those townhomes. Um, that'll be an important component to funding, um, that continual, um, infrastructure, um, as we move through the first phase.
Great. Um, Commissioner Silver had a comment?
Uh, uh, appreciate it. Um, one of the things that I think could be helpful, Neil, that we've been asking for, for, for a little bit on this project, is, is the aspirational overall timeline, um, that may change in the future. But I, I think the frustration I'm hearing is that there's no timeline outside of this initial senior building. So there's no, there's no plan for the rest of the project. So people have no idea when, in best-case scenario, those, those, those units would be delivered. So I think that would be helpful to the residents of Berry Farm if we could do that.
Especially due to the fact, especially due to the fact that- Especially due to the fact, especially due to the fact that they kept saying that they had the money throughout this whole process to be able to do the job and complete it.
So Commissioner Silver, I agree with you. I'm gonna ask Central San Corin to set up a briefing of the board on the entire project and I agree with you, but even if it's just the aspirational goals, we need to know that and the public needs to know that. So Central, please, please take note of that. Thank you so much, Ms. Matthews. So we're gonna move on to our non-resident witnesses. First is Brian Kendall or Kendall Brian. Is Kendall still around? Gabrielle Alexandra Smith.
Yes, hello.
Go right ahead. We can hear you.
Okay, I have a question. Well, I have something to say. Well, I know a woman who's been on the Section 8 list for a lot of years and at the time she got a chance to move to Section 8 years before, a representative from the D.C. H.A. told her that she either could take it or leave it to move her little son in an extreme drug-infested neighborhood. And this woman felt that it wasn't fair that she had to literally pick to put her child in danger versus having a place to live. That's one. And I would just like to speak on just the, a certain culture like being forced out of their own homes, but also speaking that I do understand it because I believe that it's, it's just, it's a new era and sometimes it's good to rebuild and add a new, I guess, energy to a particular neighborhood for different changes. I know a lot of people have a lot of differences with gentrification, saying that it doesn't really help or saying that it does help. My thing is that if a particular group doesn't take care of something, then I think it's just like the next group just steps up and takes advantage of what it is. And to particular people that can be viewed as not fair or that can be unfair. Because when I go to the local parks, when I go, when I go to the housing places that are redesigned, I don't really see a lot of minorities there. I see a lot of white, they're taking advantage of the new resources in these new, in these new complexes that are built and I don't really, and I see, I see minorities basically misusing the new resources that were built in these complexes. And it raises the question as to this is why particular things are happening. That's what I would like to say.
Well, thank you for sharing your thoughts with us, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Next up is Danielle Delagio. Danielle, how many, how many times I say your name, I can't help but butcher it, but you forgive me every time.
You'll get it right one day. Or the next person, as you say, change is inevitable. I wanted to, for clarification to the board about Berry Farms, although, yes, there is a senior building being built, only 35 units of those are for Berry Farms residents. So a very small number of Berry Farms residents are gonna be able to return. That's potentially gonna happen in 2024 if they close this year. So the board should just be aware of that, that this is all, you know.
I apologize for, I apologize for interrupting, but I just wanna make sure.
You can, you can hold on.
Central, please hold on until Daniel is finished.
That's from your guys' minutes. You said that, Central, so don't try to clear that up. On the other piece I wanted to really focus on is, well, first, a question. Was there any presentation made to this board today in your brown bag about Melvo?
So we tabled that. We're gonna have a special meeting to discuss that.
Okay, so therein lies the problem. We heard Ms. Burbidge talking about residents being the last to know about anything. In the recent presentation that D.C.H.A. made on May 25th, I have the presentation. It says that this month, a presentation would be made to the board about, what was it? Present Melvo general contractor recommendation. Residents have been told that at the beginning of this year, something would happen, meaning relocation and construction. Now that's been pushed back to 2022. And the way it was put to residents was because all of these things needed to happen. And in the timeline they provided, I understand things changed, it said that that presentation would happen today. So now we have to question, does that push the timeline back? And residents' expectations are, you know, once again, kind of nebulous. When can folks actually understand or be given a very clear picture of when, what will actually happen? Because for, since 2015, when this Melvo redevelopment was put to residents of the properties, we still don't know when anything will happen. And that is a RAD project, right? It got pushed back. I understand that that stuff happens, but the communication has been very unclear. In a meeting, this was all brought up in a meeting that happened in September of 2020. I have the slide deck on that too. And now this, this most recent meeting, you know, once again, the half-truths are happening. I don't wanna say lies because they're written in ways that aren't 100% lies, but these half-truths are happening. And there's a sense that we don't need to meet to meet. We just don't wanna meet and meet because we know your guys' times is precious, but these are people's lives. People need to know what's happening. And if there's even a small change in these details from what folks are told, that needs to happen and that's not happening right now. And you can see, as Ms. Burbidge spoke, you know, folks just don't know what's happening and are very concerned about what's gonna happen to the units some people have lived in for decades. So that's a big piece that I want this board to sit with and to consider as you approve. You know, there's two RADS now in the pipeline along with all of the other redevelopments that nothing is really happening on, at least from what residents know. Residents wanna come back. We're not fighting these redevelopments just to fight them. We're fighting people, you know, being the last to know and their lives being shook up. You know, at Melvo, people wanna know, where am I gonna enroll my kid for school? Where am I, you know, am I gonna have to change my doctor's office? You know, and these things are huge parts of people's lives. And before this board, you know, approves these things or, you know, the oversight you have on this needs to be a lot better because it's just not working. It's not working and people's lives are being just shook up. I wanted to say that, then I wanted to also ask, how has this housing authority or how does it plan to spend the money that the local government has given to you all? Myself and the other advocate groups and residents have been fighting for years now to include local funding so we can help improve and repair public housing. The mayor is now saying, we're giving it all to Claridge Towers. I'm not saying they don't deserve it because D.C.H.A. is not spending their money right. I think that's a shame that we all have all fought and tried to work together to get this local funding on the books. But now, you know, because you all, and I'm not saying anyone specifically, but you all are not spending it correctly, it's, you know, the, all the money is going to essentially three projects, Berry Farm, Park Morton and Claridge Towers. We'll see what the council does with it. But nonetheless, that's a huge concern for me and I think for the advocacy community. When we try to work as hard as possible to say we need more money because people are living in horrible conditions and now stall redevelopments are gonna, are gonna provide any relief. And now the mayor is taking, you know, I think the stance that, well, we gotta wait till they figure out how to spend this until there's somebody permanent in that seat or at least as permanent as possible.
So let me, Danielle, let me, let me just get Central to respond and then Alex also. And then John, if you wanna provide some context to the budget, please do. So Central, then Alex, then John.
I'll address the Berry Farm question, you know, supported by Andre if needed. Just to clarify, Daniel, I appreciate the perspective. The first building, the senior building at Berry Farm, which is, and it is confusing because it's building 1B, which will be going first, not building 1A. So 77, and Andre, correct me if I'm incorrect, 77 of the 108 are Berry Farm replacement units. The 35 replacement units that you're referencing is actually building, this is where it's, 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 it's building 1A, which will be the second building that is built. Andre, do you wanna add some additional color to that?
No, you were exactly correct.
So can I ask, in the minutes from your recent DEV Mod meeting, which we weren't allowed to participate, I understand, I guess it's not an open meeting, that's, those are the only numbers that are in those minutes. So, you know, aside from us, you know.
Look at the minutes, but I'm happy to sit down. Andre and I are happy to sit down with you and talk about what the first phase entails. And we can show you the buildings and the number of replacement units that are allocated per each and which is, which is moving first and which is second.
And Central, could you make sure that you include the residents when you have that meeting?
Sure. That presentation has been given to, as Andre indicated, on a monthly basis. And that has, the senior building has been discussed, but I'll be more than happy to ensure.
Let me, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. This board recently had, you know, or at least the DEV Mod committee had, you know, an update on Berry Farm. Does anybody that was at that meeting know about these 77 units? Like?
It was in the presentation that was given to the board as well.
Yeah.
The first building is building 1B with 77 out of 108.
So Alex, could you address the capital question that Daniel raised and then John?
Yes, yes, sir. So, so Daniel, this is Alex Morris, chief of planning, design and construction. My group handles the capital fund money or the capital money that the district has provided. I've never personally heard anyone, the mayor included, ever say that, that we're not spending the money properly. We have a plan. We had a plan for all 39.8 million in fiscal year 19 and 20 and we have a plan for spending all the $50 million that we were given this year in fiscal '21. And we have a plan for next year, fiscal '22. So, and we work very closely with the Office of the CFO, with Jovan Ware and Leroy Clay. And, you know, if you have any questions about how the money's being spent, I'm more than happy to give you detail down to the penny of where all the money is planned to go and where it's already going. So I don't think that there's any question about us spending the money properly. Everything's been done completely by district regulations and in compliance with the CFO. As to the deployment rate, yes, I would like it to go faster. I think we all would. And we are working on that. But, and then in terms of the Claridge, I'm not sure exactly where Claridge came up. That was part of our plan that we put in for fiscal year '22. And that is not necessarily what we wanna do in fiscal year '22 with all of the money. So we are going to be working to address that with the mayor's staff, the executive office. And we're gonna work on trying to get a more equitable balance of funds to where they really need to go next. But I really can't tell you any more than that. And if you wanna meet, I offer the same invitation. If you wanna meet, we can walk you through the entire plan budget for the 50 million and show you where everything's going and what the plan is from here at the end of the year.
Yeah, I'll follow up with you about that, but I'm hearing it on pretty good, you know, some pretty good information that that is the mayor's stance. I don't know if Mr. Felcekio has anything to add to that. But it does appear, you know, from what I'm hearing from Jenny Reed's office, that, you know, that's the stance. You guys haven't used it or used it quickly enough. So we're gonna hold off at least for this forthcoming budget.
John, could you respond to the budget question?
Absolutely. Well, Daniel, thanks. And Chairman, thank you for taking off this, the Daniel portion of the Board of Commissioners meeting. Daniel, I appreciate the passion and I appreciate what you're saying, but I do wanna be clear and Alex can speak to this as well, that what we did about a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, we started meetings with the mayor's office as well as the CFO's office and the housing authority in order to figure out how we would get to the funding of the transformation. And one of the things that we laid out was that over the next two years, so this being the second year of those two years, that we would fund some of the rehab. And Alex can speak to how they're getting the $50 million allocated. And again, I think we all share that sense of urgency because Alex talked about it. We'd like to obligate it, but also get it mobilized so that the conditions are improving at our buildings. And so I wanted to just go through, just so everybody was aware, just what's in the mayor's budget proposal to the council. There are, there is funding for the housing authority. Capital projects as follows. So Alex, or two, not Alex, Daniel actually mentioned Claridge Towers. This would be to do a complete renovation of Claridge Towers with capital dollars. So this would be to avoid any sort of other financial approach like a RAD. This would be a straight renovation of Claridge and it's actually $22 million in '22, $20 million in '23 and $15 million in '24, which again adds up to that $57 million. There's also $8 million from FY '21 underspending in LRSP that goes to building maintenance as well. And that's likely, that amount is likely to recur in FY '22. So that's about $16 million that will be available, coupled with that $50 million that's already in and available to Alex and the team to get some of the transformation work done. Then in addition to that, there is a number of investments in the new communities, projects. So that includes $14.8 million for Park Morton in FY '22. What that would allow us to do is whatever this board and, actually, before we start with the board, but whatever the Park Morton community decides and this board approves if they wanted to go the RAD route, this $14.8 million, we think, would help cover the gap in that program. That doesn't mean that we're doing a RAD, but it means that the funding is there for a RAD. If we wanted to do a redevelopment, there'd be a greater need and a greater number to be filled. Then there's Berry Farm, which as I stated, actually I stated earlier, 11 million and 11 million. It's actually 10 million in '22 and 11 million in '23. So Berry Farm is 10 million in '22 and 11 million in '23. And then Northwest One, which we already started Phase One, we can start Phase Two with an additional $20 million in FY '22. So those are the investments that we have in the capital projects. Now, I do agree with you that there has been frustration, but that frustration is only at the pace in which we're able to execute. And so we're gonna make sure Alex has what he needs in order to do that as a, as a board and hopefully as an organization. The only other thing, and I'll kick it to Alex after that, the only other thing I'll say, I mentioned that sort of when the mayor's office, CFO, D.C. Housing Authority met over the last kind of year and a half or at least a year and a half ago, I know, because it was before COVID. We were all in a small conference room together. At that time, what we decided to do was to fund some of the transformation plan, but then also to put out a facilities assessment, and maybe Alex, you could speak to that, a facilities assessment that would actually allow us to create a detailed plan for how we would actually get through all the needs identified in the transformation plan and be very specific about how much we needed at each property. So with that, I'll go to Alex and Chairman. Thanks for indulging me to walk through that.
Thank you, John. So related to the physical needs assessment, yes, we, I think it was the, it was November of 2019, I believe, that we all sat down in Jeff DeWitt's conference room and talked about doing a joint effort to do a physical needs assessment for the D.C.H.A.'s portfolio of public housing properties. We have 35 properties in that assessment. And we hired And we hired, we had a representative of the CFO on our evaluation panel. We selected a firm that's very highly regarded. And we are currently working back and forth to get to numbers on every single one of the sites. I will tell you that COVID did slow down the site assessments a little bit because our consultant and we both agreed that we weren't going to put their staff into occupied units in contact with residents. So they weren't able to get all the 25% of the unit portfolio surveyed. And now they have to go back this summer and do additional survey work. But we are working our way to numbers. And we are close to getting final numbers on the 20-year replacement schedule and the property by property recommendations. And I've personally made a commitment to the Office of CFO, to Mr. Dietz and Mr. Street, that we will have that on or about July 1. So they're going to have that in their hands and they'll be able to start evaluating it and doing their analysis for the input into the CAR system. That's my personal commitment. You can hold me accountable if that doesn't happen. And we, related to that, I mean, yes, thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate your expressions of support for getting the, you know, support we need to get the work out and the money out. We're working on that. We're working very hard on it. We have encountered some hiccups all along the way and we're working our way through it. Because the only way I know how to do anything is just to keep moving as fast as I can. So we are moving to try to become more efficient in the way we deploy the dollars and get the work done. And that's a work in progress. And all I can say about that is I'm not going to stop trying until we get it to a point where we're operating at high efficiency. That's my second personal commitment. And I'm being recorded, so you can go ahead and play it back to me.
Thanks, Alex.
Daniel, if, thank you. If you want to, if you want to meet, please reach out. You know how to reach out to me. We can talk.
I will. Thank you, Alex, for that.
Thank you.
Daniel, thanks as usual. And please let me know if the commitments that are made or not fully entered on a timely basis.
Let me just, once again, I mean, I understand that hiccups happen, but these hiccups affect people's lives, right? People are on edge. At Melvo, people are on edge. People are getting rid of their stuff because they've been told that they were going to have to move in the first quarter of this year. Now it's been pushed back to 2022, hopefully. So once again, just to this board, you know, there's a lot to be said about better communication. And I think this is a theme that always comes up, is I think people cognitively understand that hiccups happen. But when they don't hear about them, they have nothing else to plan their lives around but what they've been told. And they haven't been given the full picture. And I think that's an issue across the board, Berry Farm, Park Morton, the name is. So I'll just close with that. Thank you.
Danielle, you've been following this board for a while, or at least since I've been the board chair. And that one constant theme in public meetings and outside of public meetings is the need for better communication between the agency and the community they serve. So we sound like a broken record on that issue all the time. And we wouldn't stop pushing it because we think that's the most important, one of the most important part of the work of the DC Housing Authority. So you highlighting it is just one other way that we can get the agency to where it needs to be in communicating with its stakeholders. It could mean that they need a bigger army of communicators. What that looks like, I don't know. But it is the Achilles' heel of this organization that just has to change, particularly with new leadership. But again, thank you so much for raising those issues today. Bill Slover, you want to have, you had a comment? Bill, are you still with us?
Yeah. I, you kind of said what I was going to say, and I'll say it again really shortly. I think what we're hearing from Daniel and from others is sort of the real world implication and ramifications of our, the agency's lack of communication and sometimes of performing and capabilities. And so I just, yeah, I appreciate what you said, Neil, and it's something we need to continue to work on. So thank you, Daniel.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. The next and last speaker is Bridget McDermott. Ms. McDermott.
Chairman, Ms. McDermott had to leave.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, so this guy.
This is Ms. Bishop.
Hi, Ms. Bishop.
The address of, about these blue trash cans stored out here where men are coming on a regular urinating. I keep getting phone calls about they're going to be removed. Where they at? They need to be gone.
Yeah, I think you made that point clear and.
But I did get a comment about when is that going to be done? Because this was brought up several meetings ago.
So Larry Williams will be talking with you about that. So Larry, do you have a way of contacting Ms. Bishop?
I do. I'll follow up with.
Thank you so much.
Can you just give me a date right now, Larry Williams, please?
I can't give you a date. I'll give you a call after this meeting.
Great.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I have a concern as well. Because we have all these cameras that are supposed to be working, who actually monitors these cameras? Because these type of things be happening on a regular, also illegal dumping. That has been my concern since I've been here. I live by a dumpster, unfortunately. I should have realized that when I moved here. But anyway, it's always someone illegal dumping things, like the whole toilet stool, and it throws the trash cans off. And so then it results to the residents putting trash on the ground. And sometimes the dumpster don't even have to be full for the trash to be put on the ground, which becomes a 24-hour restaurant for these rodents. And then, like she said before, all these people who come from different properties or hang out or used to live here doing different things. So what's the purpose of the camera? And I remember Mr. Garrett saying he could see even if he was in Chicago or somewhere. But I said at that particular moment, even if they work, if you don't do anything about it, the cameras are like useless. So what's the point of the cameras if they're not being monitored? And things are not being done to stop the problems that are happening throughout the properties.
So Ms. Matthews, so DCHA, I'm sure, has a way for residents to complain or to bring to the attention of the leadership the issues and concerns. I don't know it off the top of my head. I would encourage you to use that. But I'm going to again ask Mr. Williams, Ms. Williams, I know I'm going to owe you my next born, which is never going to happen. But if you can reach out to Ms. Matthews, I get a better sense of the issues and try to resolve them. We'd appreciate it.
Would.
Great. So this adjourns our board meeting for today. Our next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, July 14 at 1:00 PM by WebEx. And see you all next time. Thanks so much for hanging in there with us today.
You too.